Our next item is consideration, further consideration of the override study committee reports. Superintendent of Schools Bill Lupini and Schools Committee Chairwoman Susan Ditkauff are here to discuss budgetary implications of various override scenarios. This is pursuant to our request. Superintendent Lupini, I know you've got an extensive PowerPoint presentation for you, so without --
I think you have a handout, too.
The handouts coming around.
Yes, we've got them.
You do? And they're slightly different.
A ragging.
Okay. So, without further ado, go right ahead.
I'm gonna make sure I know what I'm doing. I do know what I'm doing. I'm upset. So, um, thanks.
Polar bears?
Pardon?
You're doing polar bears?
Polar bears. Yeah, well. Um, so, thank you for having us here this evening. The purpose of this discussion is your request that we take a look at the Group One and Group Two scenarios. I'll say adjusted, and I'll go through some detail on that with you, and talk about specifics in terms of what we, what we might do budgetarily. I should say upfront, so, these are scenarios. They're not approved budgets, just as I know at some point, whether it's tonight or some other time, we'll discuss a no-override scenario. All of these discussions will go through a normal school committee budget process. We've had two pretty lengthy conversations about these scenarios, so I think that school committee are knowledgeable about what we're presenting to you, and they've had some opportunity to discuss it in some detail. But these are not approved budgets by any stretch of the imagination, nor should they be viewed as such for this evening's purposes. So, with that, let me start you here. So, you have a handout that has a little bit more detail to this called "Enrollment Growth and Actions Taken," but we've been, you've been, we've all been discussing enrollment issues in the district since '07-'08. The '07-'08 superintendent budget message references enrollment growth in the system. I think what we said at that time is we'd seen enrollments that were higher than our normal. They had been north of 500 students instead of our, our normal 450. I think it was 420 to 440 when I came here. And you can see some level of detail of the actions that have been taken since for those who've tuned into us now in the last six months to a year and believe this is a new discussion. It's something we've actually been engaged with many of you in different roles, Mr. Roschinsky, and in a number of roles represented up here in various pieces of this conversation since '07-'08. So, we've made do. We've made do because we have had some capacity to grow, because we have an extraordinary group of people who work at our buildings and who work with me in the central office, and who have kept as their focus during all of that time that despite the fact that we're having to deal with substandard classrooms and conditions and lunches that begin at 10:30, and all of those accompanying intricacies of scheduling students, that the number one and the primary purpose for us is providing a fantastic education for every student here. And we believe we've done that while we've grown by nearly 2,000 students. But as I've said to you before, we're out of time. We're out of time in terms of our buildings, and I know you've seen our short-term and long-term space needs and options, and just how intricate what we're going to have to deal with now will be. And we're out of time in terms of the budget strategies that we've put forward over the last number of years to focus on the classroom at the expense of supports like nursing, like guidance counselors, like OT, like PT, speech, like technology, that have all suffered in this school system, and our students have therefore suffered as a result of the budget strategies that we've had to put in place to provide classroom instruction for those students. So, we're out of time. We always start with a discussion in any of these kind of meetings of our core values because really that's the basis of our budgets. So, this is a slide I used earlier with you to talk about some of the programs that are in place and how they're traceable back to our core values. So, our core values of high achievement for all, excellence in teaching, collaboration, respect for human differences, and educational equity drive first and foremost our core commitments of small class sizes, that teaching matters, that our focus is on all students, and clearly in that that equity does not mean equal for each student, a focus on neighborhood schools and on quality, early education. And add to those core commitments the fact that while we continue to talk here about growth in student population, we spend far less time and need to spend more time on the diversification of that student body as we've grown. The diversity of needs. I've said to you before, I believe I said the last time I was here, that this year 38% of our incoming kindergarten students required a language screening, a home language screening. 38%. That's a new high, up from last year's high. So, not only are we growing, but our student body is becoming more diverse with more diverse needs that are not being supported by the budget strategies that we've put in place over the last number of years of focusing almost exclusively on classroom teachers. So, these are some examples of some programs that are in place that really are traceable back to those core commitments and those core beliefs. We have a growing population of English-language learners, a growing number of languages spoken in the district. We just went through, and you'll hear me highlight a couple of times tonight, a program review around our enrichment and challenge support. By the way, one of the few school systems in the Commonwealth that have programming for what's traditionally known as gifted and talented. They simply don't exist in this Commonwealth. It exists here. A commitment to Metco, our Steps to Success program, which has the same staffing that it had when we were four points less in free and reduced lunch and had a smaller student Elementary World Language Program put in in the '08 override, Performing Arts and Music, social-emotional learning and bullying prevention, where we've seen great gains in what our students report to us in terms of the way they treat one another in our schools. And the Landmark School Collaborative, which I'll try to mention at least one other time tonight, which is a collaboration, one of the first in the Commonwealth, between the private Landmark School and the public, public schools of Brookline to provide professional development for our teachers to increase their array of strategies that they can use in the classroom. And we're now in our fourth school of implementing that professional development model. High school programs, there's our School Within a School program, one of the first of its kind in the Commonwealth. The Calculus Project designed specifically when we stood in front of you in the school committee a number of years ago, talking about the lack of students of color who were able to access and succeed in our upper-level math courses. Today, I believe the number is 10 students of color who are juniors and who are accessing those courses. Not exclusively because of this project, but in large part because of this project. Our Global Leadership Program, our foreign exchanges, our tutorial program, which is part of the larger four-plus-one at Brookline High School, the Bright Program, which continues to be modeled, started here in collaboration between Brookline Mental Health and the Brookline Public Schools in an effort to ensure that students who were out of school for medical conditions could return to school on a, on a reduced time schedule. I count at least 12 models around the Commonwealth that have been taken from this model, the first of the models in the Commonwealth of Bright Programming. A wide array of athletics, the Opportunity for Change Program, and the African-American and Latino Scholars Program, all important programs to the fabric of this school system. So, we showed you a number of slides around our achievement. The last time, I singled out this one this time to make sure that we talk about the "but" in that achievement, which is simply that we've plateaued in almost each of the, in almost every one of these indicators that we show you all at very high levels, but that have plateaued. And what you would see if you, if you looked beneath the surface is widening gaps. That's not an accident. It's happening because of the strategies that we've had to employ over the last number of years to keep any pace with our growing student population and the fact that that student population is becoming more diverse by the day. So, in terms of looking at what you asked us to do for tonight, I want to start back at the beginning and then take you through the numbers, to the numbers that we worked against in presenting these scenarios for you. So, the original school department model that we put forward was a model of about 12.3 million. It assumed, if you recall, 630 incoming kindergarten students each year and a 1% collective bargaining increase each year. So, the OSC, the two groups recommended override and local revenue, revenues slash reductions, Group One of 7.9 million and Group Two of 10.7 million. Remember that 2.9 million of each of those scenarios is made up of local revenue increases and, and expense reductions. So, the override specified by Group One is 5 million. The override specified by Group Two is 7.8?
7.9, I think.
7.9, thank you. So, we were working, we've been working with this terminology of the 65% model and the 90% model. So, let me show you what we did from there, I believe in consultation with you. So, we initially took that school department projection and factored in, instead of a 1% increase, a 2% increase. There were a number of adjustments made, the first of which I think I mentioned to you the last time we were here, in that there's $1 million in our current budget from one-time funds. Secondly, there was an adjustment, and Mr. Cronin is certainly more qualified to explain the nuances of these adjustments than I am, but there was an adjustment of the health insurance number from an assumption of 5% to, I believe, 4%. There was a change in the assumption around Chapter 70 and what we might receive over this three-year period. I believe it was $400,000 a year was the change in assumption. And there were a number of changes in local aid that, again, I'll leave to Mr. Cronin. But the net effect of all of these changes was a $200,000 reduction in the gap, which left us with an adjusted PSB projection of 14.3. We, 14.3 million. We applied the percentage of 65 and 90 to those and came out with an OSC adjusted recommendation as a percent of the adjusted projection of 9.3 and 12.9 million. When you factor out the 2.9 million, it leaves you with an OSC adjusted override of 6.4 million and 10 million. And that's what we worked against. So, our adjusted projection was 14.3, our adjusted new funding, 9.3 and 12.9, meaning that in the Group One assumption, we're working against a shortfall to the model of $5 million. And in Group Two, we're working against a shortfall to the model of $1.4 million. And that's the scenarios that I'm working in presenting to you tonight, if that makes sense to you.
Can I, I don't, I don't want to take you off your stride, but I just want to ask a question. So, I am sure that there is going to be some pushback on some of the reductions that the override study committee or, or reductions or increases in fees or reductions of budget things on the town side of the budget. So, I should take your numbers and mentally add on to the shortfall if I think that some of the other recommendations are not feasible.
So, one other thing, thank you for that. One of the things that you'll see in one of my slides at the end of the discussion of each of the scenarios is some things that we think are challenges within each of the scenarios. You've just highlighted one of them. That is, that up till this point, the 2.9 million has been an assumption that we have used, right? And you believe that there are concerns about some pieces of that. I believe I expressed to you the last time we were here that there are some things on the school side of that that we are concerned about, not the least of which is that some part of it's already been implemented and you can't count it twice. But to this point, we've continued to work with that 2.9 as, as an assumption for this, for this modeling. But you're absolutely correct.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Just let me find my place here. So, what I want to take you through first is a little bit of a discussion about the long-term model. What we'll call for these discussions, the 100%, okay? So, this model included a robust technology plan that advances teaching and learning in our classrooms for all teachers and students, that creates equity of access, as we discussed with you the last time we were here, across all of our schools, and enhances our ability to provide teachers and leaders with access to data to utilize in their work. We talked here about a rigorous, updated, and aligned curriculum where we're able to provide all learning spaces, classrooms, learning centers, libraries, a manner which is equipped with the tools, materials, and supplies necessary to make sure that our curriculum is rigorous, updated, and aligned. We talked about meeting the continuum of student needs for meaningful learning by enhancing programs like enrichment and challenge support, mathematics specialists, intervention programs, tutorial, and our literacy specialist model, to make sure that they are appropriate and that they ensure equity and access across all of our schools. Also in that category, we talked about providing support for students beyond their academics, nurses, guidance counselors, psychologists, with attention to the whole child in an appropriate manner to ensure equity and access across all of our schools. We talked about appropriate administrative structures in terms of the elementary level, the high school level, and the central office to ensure that student safety, supervision and evaluation, family and community engagement, and data use and culture are in place across the entire system. We talked about a commitment to global education through the enhancement of our Elementary World Language Program. We talked about appropriate class sizes, making sure, hold on one second. Ah, okay. I went too fast. We talked about maintaining the uniqueness and richness of course offerings at Brookline High School. You know, our consultant, who some of you know, who's working with us on the high school project, has remarked about the richness and variety of courses available at Brookline High School, which is not available at most high schools. That's something we want to maintain and enhance. Our commitment to closing opportunity gaps through programs like Steps to Success, The Calculus Project, and making sure that every student meets or exceeds Brookline's high standards by providing them with the full access and opportunities for learning. And it is, it is through a model where we have regular education interventions in occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech that that's accomplished. Now, class size. Maintaining class size of up to 22 students per class in grades K through 3 and up to 24 students per class in grades 4 through 8, which I'll discuss in a little, a little while as well. Program development to support special education and English-language learners. We've had many conversations here about the success that we've had in ensuring that Brookline students who have IEPs can have an education in Brookline. That is, the reductions that have occurred in our out-of-district placements. And I've said to you then, and I'll say again tonight, that that does not happen accidentally. It happens because quality programs are built and parents are convinced that their children will be better served here than it places like Landmark and Carroll and other school, other private institutions. We believe many, most of those students belong here. We've reduced those numbers dramatically, but it's going to take a continued effort of program building to do that. The same thing with meeting our ELL populations, right? We have a, we have a varied, we have changed, let me say this, we have changes in some of the languages that are considered now among our top five. Just in the last two years, Arabic has become one of our top five languages in the district. Three years ago, there were zero students who had that as their primary language. So, we've seen some shifts in those, in languages present in, in the district. And keeping up with those programs and meeting the needs of our families for translation services is a key aspect for a district that is diversifying as quickly as ours is. We want to make sure that the Old Lincoln School is a quality learning experience for students when they go there. We made the right first step when we hired Monica Crowley as the principal, but making sure that we provide the right kinds of supports beyond the classroom teachers who will go there from devotion and the schools to be named later is a really important part of this plan. We need a budget for instructional supplies that provide educators with the full array of tools, materials, and experiences to meet the needs of learners. So, here's a news flash, the cost of these materials has gone up, right? And if you're going to provide the kinds of hands-on materials that students need in science classrooms and other classrooms, they cost money. These budgets have also been a place that we have robbed from over the last number of years to make sure that we can continue to put, put teachers in classrooms. So, we originally set out here to provide the primary grade support for students and classroom teachers. That is, you remember discussions we've had over the last number of years about the kindergarten and first-grade paraprofessional model, where we have a pair in every one of those classrooms? And the goal was to both provide support for classroom teachers and also to reduce the number of students who had one-to-one paraprofessionals when they get later into the elementary schools. And guess what? That's exactly what's happened. But the original intent of that model was to add a second-grade component, and one of the goals of the original projection model was to be able to do that. We also wanted to meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of students through guidance counselors, nurses, psychologists, which I mentioned earlier. And we wanted to make sure that we could provide quality professional learning opportunities for our teachers, because goodness knows at the state and federal level, we've certainly seen enough come down for classroom teachers. We also have initiatives within the district, and we want to make sure that we provide them with the learning opportunities they need to be able to be, make sure that they deliver outstanding service to our students. This was the original intent of the model that we put forward. And we had numbers attached, some that you'll see later on in the presentation. So, let's talk about the 90%. So, here's the key to what I'm going to talk about. When you see something in italics, it means it's changed from the 100%. In a moment when you see something fly off the screen, it'll mean that it's not actually included in the 90%, okay? So, let's talk about, about some of these items. So, the technology plan in the 90% model is funded at the three-year levels put forward in the original model with one major change. And I want to thank Mr. Stokes for this and the conversations that we've had. We have modified the assumption around staffing in the technology model from one that was $175,000 each year over three years to one that's $100,000 over three years. So, when you see a number around the technology plan, you'll notice that there's a $225,000 reduction in the plan. It's all around that staffing assumption, and we're actually meeting, I think it's next week, to talk about that, that assumption and what the, what that could look like. It's also actually, you'll see later on, part of the administrative study that we're doing on the school side right now. The rigorous update and the lined curriculum, we have unfortunately chosen to reduce slightly the instructional supply budget here, and that's why you see a change there. That's a slight modification. Again, I'll show you specifics later on in terms of the change that was made. Appropriate administrative structures, we've made reductions from the original model in what we assumed for central administration and what we assumed for high school administration. But all of these other areas in the 90% model remain the same as they were, in the 90% scenario, excuse me, remain the same as they were in the original model that we put forward. On the second page of this, appropriate class sizes, program development to support special education, quality learning experience at Old Lincoln School, the primary grade support is gone. The second-grade paraprofessional model is factored out in the 90% model. We prioritized other items on this list over that intervention at the 90% level. We also made changes to academic, social, and emotional needs of students. That particular item, we, we modified, I shall see later in terms of the specifics, the assumption around the number of guidance counselors that we were, we would add, and we modified those assumptions. We modified the assumption in terms of nursing as well. So, that does not represent what was there originally, and we modified fairly dramatically the amount of money spent toward professional learning opportunities for our teachers. I'll come back to some detail on that, on some additional detail on that when we get to the individual areas, and I'm going to walk you through a couple and that you have copies in front of you. So, in the 65% model, we, as you might imagine, needed to make some choices. And I will tell you that in terms of what we put forward for the school committee's discussion, we made choices in the areas, in many of the areas that have been neglected over the last number of years. We continued those choices. I'll say here that we kept the same commitment to regular education interventions. We kept the same commitment to guidance counselors as in the 90% model. We kept the same commitment to nurses as in that model. And we made sacrifices in other areas, some of them that are, that are part of our current program, in order to meet those areas often referred to as catch-up that have been neglected for the past number of years of our growth. One area we did not make that change to in terms of what's been put on the table, and another of those areas that's been neglected is our technology plan. It remains the same across the original model, the 90% scenario and the 65% scenario. Where you see things in darker italics, it means it's a change even from the 90% model. So, let me show you what goes, and then we can talk about some of these other areas. So, meeting the continuum of student needs for meaningful learning moves off. Let me explain why. We make in the 65% model, let me give you the technical piece, and let me explain to you then what it means. The original high school staffing model was based on a ratio of one student to every 14.25 students. That is our present ratio. That's not class sizes. That's adults to students. That's what allows programs to operate. In the 65% model, we changed that assumption to 1 to 16, 1 to 16. Now, let me tell you what happens as a result of changing that assumption to 1 to 16. One or more of three things happens. First, you lose support programs, like tutorial, or they're scaled back. Second, you have increases in class size. Or third, you have some of that unique array of courses that disappears. I can't tell you tonight which one of those, or ones of those, happens. That will take a lot of consultation with the headmaster and a lot of work with the high school administration. But I can tell you, it will be, we will start the conversation in those three areas. That's what will happen. That's what will happen as a result of that ratio change. The commitment to global education moves off, not that we don't have global education programs continuing at the high school, but that removes the Elementary World Language Program. Not the enhancements that we talked about in the 90% model, but the program is gone in the 65% scenario. I mentioned earlier, the course offerings at Brookline High School as one other thing that would be affected by that change in ratio, so move it to the side. It changes. And closing the opportunity gaps, we enhanced in the 90% model, the steps to success model by two positions. Many of you have been associated with that program and know that the conversation has been about the numbers of students, the numbers of students who are now living in poverty in this district, the number of students who are living just above the poverty line in this district, and our staffing model is the same as it was in 2004. There have been discussions about moving that program into younger grades and there have been discussions about moving that program to serve students who don't live, necessarily live in public housing. Both worthy discussions, both necessary discussions, both possible discussions in the 90% model. Neither, none of those a possible discussion in the way we've looked to this point at the 65% model. And the administrative structures, we, we actually made one additional change at the high school in terms of administration in the 65% model. So here are the areas that were highlighted in the, um, that are highlighted in the 65 in the comparison of those to the 90. So class sizes moves off. And the reason it moves off is we make assumptions about consolidations at the elementary level in this model that we did not make in the 90. So that means, that means that whether we believe, whether we can actually take advantage of them or not, as we've managed to capture in budgets over the last number of years, they will happen because they would happen as part of this model. So some of you have looked at these numbers that we operate across grade levels. And we do every year, this year we were fortunate to find, I think it was three consolidations in that budget. But that's a far cry from making a three-year set of assumptions that will capture at least one each year. But that's the assumption that we've had to factor in here. And by the way, the one thing I will say that, um, you know, over the last two years, I think a lot of people have talked particularly about the last two years and, um, and our, the tightness of our, of our, um, range in assignments in K, in K and 1. Well, the tighter those assignments, if there aren't significant shifts later on, the, the more difficult it is to find consolidations. So again, I'll just read, just for effect, if you will, kindergarten, Ignacio got to listen to me read these to him today, so I want him to hear them a second time today. So I, I'll just share, the kindergarten classes now, right now, there are 692 students and there are 31 sections. And those classes look like this, 23, 23, 22, 23, 22, 22, 23, 22, 23, 23, 24, 23, 23, 21, 22, 22, 22, 22, 21, and 20. There aren't consolidations there. Now we'll see what happens throughout, but that's a very tight range for an average class size of, I think, Mr. Rowe, 21.5, if I'm correct. And that's what the first grade looks like as well. So consolidations become more difficult as those numbers inch up, and those numbers have inched up. So, primary grade support for students and teachers is, is gone. It was gone in the 90% model. It doesn't come back in the 65. And so, just to kind of summarize these, there are a number of things that are partially achieved or not achieved in the 65. We are able to acceptably equip learning spaces, certainly not be able, are able to provide the instructional materials, supplies that we are in the other model that we believe are necessary. Some resources are necess, are provided. We believe there's some effect on the, on the tutorial program, the four plus one model at the high school. Resources necessary to support students beyond their academics are acceptable levels. That is, we haven't met ratios that we sought to achieve in terms of nurses, guidance counselors, and psychologists. Administrative structure is in place at the elementary level. We've eliminated the elementary world language program in this model, eliminated it. We've eliminated the, um, fourth grade instrumental program in this model. We've eliminated, um, uh, richness of course offerings, appropriate class sizes and/or supports. The tutorial is an example at Brookline High School. We've made changes to class sizes at the elementary level through consolidations, and we've eliminated the enrichment and challenge support program, which was actually in the 90% model for an enhancement. And so, there's one thing I want to point out very clearly in terms of those two areas. The difference between the 90%, so people will say, we'll talk about ECS and elementary world language as two examples being in here. I want to be really clear that in the 90% model, the elementary world language program is enhanced. Right now, we run sixth grade, sixth grade model as a three ti, three by 45 minutes per class sessions, run three times a week, 45 minutes. In this model, in the 90% model, it's run as five days a week at 45 minutes, or, or, we haven't made this decision yet, or, we would allow students in sixth grade to have an option between two language, like, languages like they do in seventh and eighth grade. So the elementary program ones, runs one language. So one of the ideas that we've tinkered around with in this model is that students would have a choice beginning in sixth grade of that language, okay? The, the enrichment and challenge support program in the 90% model is enhanced. We've had a very active program review underway. They've made some terrific recommendations in terms of staffing, in terms of math focus of the program, and we've incorporated those recommendations into the 90% as we said we would a year ago when these conversations began. But it's not possible to maintain that in the 65% model. So, concerns in both scenarios. So the nine, neither the 90% or 65% scenario include the enrollment component, which has been part of the town school partnership for the last number of years. I believe that component has averaged somewhere around $400,000 to $500,000 per year. The thinking has been that that component would not be part of the town school partnership given the override. So I just want to keep on the table that it's not there at $400,000 to $500,000 per year. Both this 90 and the 65 show existing space rentals of $550,000 per year, and our projected future space rentals, which we're right now projecting at 200,000. And again, you've seen the short-term space options, so you know what I'm talking about in terms of those potential space rentals, additional early education classrooms being the key to that. We've projected another 200,000, so there's $750,000 a year in space rental in our budget, beginning with these scenarios. Transportation costs for devotion school students to Old Lincoln for next year before the project actually kicks in are not part of either scenario. And to the point that was raised earlier, both scenarios assume $2.9 million in local revenues and expenditure reductions, and that has yet to be tested. So caveats on either model. Now I don't want to take you through each one of these, but I want you to know they're, they're here, they're actually in your packet. What we've done is an example, and I'll walk you through this one, and I can show you a couple of others as well, is we've actually compared the long-range model to the 90% scenario to the 65% scenario. Some in terms of, in terms of FTEs, some in terms of dollars. And we've tried, then tried to give you a narrative on what occurs in each. So let me talk about this one. So in the original model, there were 15.6 classroom teachers, K to 8. Now there are 22.1. What happened? Well, we changed the assumption, remember, to 650 students incoming each year. And so that increased the number of teachers because as you may recall, each section actually equals 1.3 FTE. That's to account for the art, the music, and the physical education that come along with each section. So each section adds 1.3 FTE. Now in the 65% scenario, as I explained to you a few minutes ago, we actually then take that 22.1 and assume a consolidation each year, bringing that number to 18.2. Chart makes sense? So each one of these you'll find in that structure. Remember I said at the high school, in the 65% scenario, we actually take the ratio to one adult to every 16 students? That actually changes this so that we, we actually reduce our high school staffing over this three-year period by five staff members. And remember, these are now the high school numbers we're working against. The original projections are shown in the green. The revised projections to take into account our present fourth through eighth grades are shown in the blue. So I, let me just pick out a couple others of these. This is what I meant when I said guidance and psychologist. The original model was based on a ratio of one to every, one for 350 students at K through 8, and one to 195 students at, at grades 9 through 12. We've changed those assumptions to one to 400 and one to 250 and reduced the model in both the 90% and the 65% by 2.2 FTE. And, and this is the kind of analysis, and again, that you have in front of you for each area, whether it's elementary world language, central administration, vice principals, high school administration, steps to success, there's exactly what I laid out for you. The model showed an increase, the 90% scenario shows an increase, the 65% shows no increase. The enrichment and challenge support, as I indicated to you, the 90% scenario shows an increase for ECS resource teachers, coordination of the program and math specialists. The 65% scenario shows elimination of the program. And you have there also the charge that was provided to the program review committee. Here's our technology initiative, and again, what you'll see there between the long-range model and the 90 and 65% scenarios is the factoring out of $225,000 for staffing. Again, thanks to the great work that we've been able to accomplish with Mr. Stokes. And here again, are some things we've been able to accomplish already this year in the technology plan, which I'm happy to go through with you, um, and then the goals of that technology plan for 16 through 18. Literacy specialists, math specialists, again, areas where we've not varied the commitment. It's been long enough. So I guess that's what I really want to title some of these areas that people would look at the 65 and say, why didn't you make reductions there? Because we've made reductions for the last five to six years. Those reductions have been maintaining the same kinds of support staff that our students need, that our students require in a time when our enrollments have been growing and our enrollments have been diversifying enough. There's what we've done with professional learning and innovation. Again, not where it should be, but, but a sacrifice that we've made in these scenarios in order to meet our goals in a number of other key areas. Custodial repair and maintenance, instructional supplies, nurses, and student service interventions in occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, and board-certified behavior analysts in an RTI model, response to intervention model designed to serve students before, to intervene when students are regular education before they require that legal document in order to access these services. And so the summary is, I should start this by saying, when comparing the two models, set the 100% model over here for a second. When comparing these two scenarios, the 90, 90% scenario of the two provides funding to best meet the core values of the school system as well as to meet our enrollment-driven needs. The 65% scenario will lead to the reduction or elimination of core commitments and programs. In the scenario that we've put forward, and again, feel free to remove those and substitute your own, because somewhere it results in the elimination of something in our core commitments and programs. In this, in this scenario that we've prepared, enrichment and challenge support, elementary world language, fourth grade instrumental music, elementary class size and key aspects of the Brookline High School experience, class size, course offerings, and academic support, all suffer. So, uh, again, I can go through any of these that you'd like me to. We try, we tried to provide you with a level of detail that, that I thought you, that we all thought you might want to see while making sure that we stayed sort of at the highlights of the overall consideration of the model, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Salkman Wyszynski.
Um, one of, one of the things I'm struggling with, um, is in, in, in both of these models, you know, uh, the, the way I think of budgeting is I start at the low number and then kind of work my way up. You're starting at a high number and working your way down. And to me, the, the number to work your way up from is the no override number. So I, I, because that's in effect going to be on, on the ballot. And, and I know that, uh, you haven't, you're not prepared to talk to that scenario, and I, I presume you will be in a, in a few weeks, and perhaps you, you can talk to that in a second. But the, the 65% still represents, um, a, a nine-point-something-million-dollar increase in, in the budget, yet we're, we're here, the only thing I'm hearing in this, in the 65% is, is cuts. And then the, the, the 90% is, is a 12-point-something-million-dollar increase in the budget. And I'm still hearing cuts, but how can it be cuts against the no override scenario? And, and I presume that backing, backing this up is going to be, you know, detail, you know, down to, you know, it represents expositions, and here's how we're going to allocate them. At, at, we're going to be getting to that level of detail by the time we have to make a decision.
So, um, I mean-
It's a lot of questions.
No, it's a lot of good questions though, thank you. Um, so, um, we actually have some of that level of detail by year for the three years. So one of the things that we started with from the beginning of the modeling was trying to project those, um, over the, over the course of actually what was a program through FY22. So the original, and I know you've seen it, the original model took us through FY22 with a certain set of assumptions. So we have that, we have to go back and take, take a look at it. So I don't, I, you know, I'm sure we have a lot of work to do on a no override scenario, but I, but, but you're right, we didn't start there because I actually don't know what that number is. Because I don't actually know until we sit down and have a conversation about that, what part of that we're expected to reduce against, right? And whether the assumption is that the school department will make the entire reduction of what's necessary, right? Or, or whether there'll be some other discussion about what that allocation will look like. And we've not had that conversation, so I don't actually know what a no override scenario is until I see those numbers.
I think though you're, uh, to Neil's question, you're talking about cuts was in relation to your 100% scenario.
We're talking about reductions against the 100% scenario. And I hope what I pointed out as well, through, through just some examination of some of these individual areas, is the accomplishments that we're able to bring to the program and to students in each of these scenarios. I mean, yes, it's true that, that the classroom teachers, that we are able to bring additional classroom teachers. We are however, in that scenario, going to see changes in, in class size. You need to know that, right? We're able to honor commitments to special education and ELL. We're able to honor the same scenario that we did with guidance and psychologist, which, which improves, um, in, in many ways, the situation for students at our elementary schools where until this past year, we've not added guidance or psychologist. So I'm sorry if it, if it, if it feels like I'm only portraying them against cuts. There are a number of those, and it's why we've provided you with this level of detail, where you can see the additions to program that are created even within the 65% scenario. My point was that in order to accomplish a number of things that are in the 100%, the model, the original model that was put forward, we believe with reason around guide, to accomplish some of those things, that reductions are necessary in some, in some other areas, that a close examination of our overall program and prioritization of those areas is necessary, and those will be difficult conversations.
Salkman, do it.
It would help me in the way that you have added some cost factors to the rental space. If you could give us, uh, in effect, the cost of creating a new facility at the old Lincoln School, roughly what number of classrooms you anticipate to provide in that facility and the cost of it.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm assuming that over the three-year period, it will be fully occupied, right?
That's our assumption, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. But in your projections, that's really my question.
So let me say this, it actually was in the last presentation that we did. There's a number, there's an assumed number, I think it's in the $670,000 range, and that's above and beyond the moving of, say, the seventh and eighth grade staff to, from one school to that school.
Right.
Okay, there are costs in terms of running a school. Some of it's people and some of its other factors.
Well, that's why I compared it to the rented space.
Right. So the one other, the one kind of, and I think I even mentioned this the last time, the one kind of iffy area in that are, is that people think it's just a matter, when you move the seventh and eighth grade, for example, from devotion, it's a matter of moving the people who are teach, who teach seventh and eighth grade. And that's true, except that some of those are, people are marbled into other grade levels, and they aren't easily extracted to move from one building to another. So there are some additional costs there. But most of the costs are around opening a building, establishing an office staff, those kinds of area, custodial staff, those kinds of areas. So we have that, we actually, I think in that presentation, had the breakdown, but we'll be happy to publish that again.
The half million dollars that you said is assumed to no longer be part of the town-school partnership transfer. So let's explore that a second, a second. So why not amend the town-school partnership, give the schools that half million dollars that they're getting anyway, and reduce the override by that half million dollars?
So, two things.
I think Mr. Klechner should be answering that question.
I don't think you have to amend the town-school partnership, and then for the second part of my answer, I was going to turn it over to Mr. Klechner to answer that question.
When was that?
Right now.
Well, you know, certainly, the school-town partnership is a model, is an approach, and we have varied from that in the past, and we will continue to do so. Obviously, we've discussed those components. We haven't made any decisions about that. You know, we want to make sure that when we adjust the school-town partnership, we're doing it things that can be sustainable, you know, become part of the long-term base, and also that's equitable. And, you know, we don't want to do things that are going to then create consequences, negative consequences too. So we have to look at those. But I think those are obvious things that we are looking at, and I think that's why they're on, in the superintendent's presentation.
By the way, when I say why not, I'm not saying, I'm advocating, I'm asking for the rationale.
Yeah, I just want to respond to that, because I do feel that on the town side of the budget, we have been cut, cut, cutting for years, and we have many needs on the town side of the budget that we have just said, well, we can't do, because especially for the past number of years, we've been giving more of, you know, whatever money was available to the schools, knowing that they had this, you know, imminent disastrous problem on their hands. But that doesn't mean that the needs on the town side have gone away. And so, you know, I, when, and I frankly am concerned about some of the recommendations of the override study committee in terms of the town side of the budget, I will say. And I hope we'll have a night to fully discuss those.
More questions?
Let me just expand on Nancy's statement. How are we going to get, what's going to be our process? We have a proposal and then a proposed financing plan, part of which is an override, and then other parts are increases in fees and then some reductions. So, you know, how are we going to get there? So are we going to, are we going to have a session on the town side? That was our, that was our initial cause, that was our initial discussion. So I just want to just make sure that's still on track. I just lost my thought.
It's okay. Well, sticking with town-side assumptions, I assume that Mr. Cronin's been in on this, the assumptions that have been made regarding?
Yes, he has, and in fact, the walkthrough I did with you around those changes in assumptions came from Mr. Cronin. As I said earlier, if you want a more detailed conversation with those, about those, it would be Mr. Cronin you'd want to have that conversation with, not your superintendent.
And 2% collective bargaining, is that the core of those assumptions?
2% collective bargaining for exactly the same reasons that I laid out for you in our initial presentation, yes.
Slavomir Daley.
Yeah, I wonder if you can just walk us through, I did recently talk to a Brookline parent who, due to the crowding, one of her children's classes had recently moved her child to a private school setting. And she did say to me, yes, it's true, Brookline schools are way behind in the technology. So can you tell us a little bit about what the technology landscape looks like in the 65%, the 90%, and your 100%?
So the, I mean, you probably read the piece, which I think does it as well as anything that was in the tab recently, about what's been accomplished just in the first year of implementation of that technology plan. We, just as some examples, in FY '15, we are nearing completion of installing mounted projection at Brookline School in nearly all classrooms. We've implemented Google apps for education in our middle grades. We have a high-quality wireless connectivity at every school. She's right, three years ago, there wasn't high-quality wireless in our schools. Three years ago. All full-time staff now are provided with appropriate computers on a four-year replacement cycle. That was, that had ranged, Mr., to, I think it was five to six years at one time, a few years ago. Chromebooks are readily available for sign-out at Brookline High School and access to devices for students with greatest needs. And a school committee knows this issue and focused on this issue, that we had many teachers who, when we provided the wireless network, were beginning to move ahead with using technology in their classrooms and assignments, with one slight problem, a number of our students didn't have access. And so this year, we've made Chromebooks available for sign-out for students so that no student is denied access to a part of the curriculum because of not having the technology.
Is there a program to allow students to buy computers at a favorable price?
Okay, so you keep wanting to jump ahead on me tonight, so that's okay, that's, no, that's perfectly okay. In the 16 to 18 plan, we've talked about more online resources available and access by students and educators, core texts in accessible format for all students. I can tell you, you know a little bit about my youngest daughter, my youngest, my two youngest went to Beverly High School, where they've had a technology plan, a bring-your-own-device one-to-one program for the last five years. And she, you know, she's legally blind and does not have the need to, she used to have enlarged textbooks that we would either carry to and from school, that was a chore, or we would keep at home, and now everything's on, all her textbooks are online and are on the laptop that she carries, right? Online learning opportunities available for and access by students and educators, state tests, which where just Commonwealth is moving toward a robust distinctive technology effort so that all students with disabilities have their needs met, a common learning management system for parents, for our staff, for our students, every classroom with the appropriate projection system, data collection and analysis systems in place to support teachers having, teachers and principals having ready access to data on student performance, school-based and system staff having appropriate access to data, educators with digital literacy self-assessment tools so we can figure out where they are and what their needs are in professional development, and a system-supported bring-your-own-device program for students is in this plan, is in this plan.
And that's the 100% plan, or the 90%?
Well, remember, we didn't vary this plan across the scenarios.
Okay.
This plan's there. Technology, as your, as the person you ran into on the street said, technology efforts have not been met in this system for quite some time, and we do not, we do not meet in terms of the technology used by our staff, in terms of the teaching and learning tools used by our staff, in terms of the expectations and what's made available for our students. We certainly do not look like the districts who we like to compare ourselves to, to put it mildly. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, so, and if we did the things you just said, would we look more like the schools we typically compare ourselves to?
We would, at the very least, have what Eric Conti, my good colleague in Burlington, calls the basic plumbing, right?
Okay.
And that's not a bad place to be at the end of this cycle. We'd have those things that I mentioned in place for all of our staff, those kinds of opportunities available for students. We would certainly see more use of online tools in teaching and learning, and yes, that's not a bad place to be.
Slavomir Wyszynski.
Question, I guess, I don't know whether this goes to Mel or Bill. What's our timetable for figuring out a recommendation on the no override scenario and then any suggested modifications to the town-school partnership?
Well, in terms of the, I'll take the last one first, the school-town partnership, we continue to look at that as we build our revenues. And I would just say, I commit that if it's possible, we will adjust that, the model, as much as we can to reduce the override ask. So then in terms of the no override, we've begun to discuss this, you know, we're looking, obviously, for some policy direction from the board and the school committee, but absent that, I think in a couple of weeks, we'd be prepared to start a fashion, the context of what that could look like. I would say that I think it is important for this board to look at all of the override study committee recommendations, you know, to do that in connection with what we may be willing to do in terms on the town side of the budget. So I think what I would recommend is the board do have a session dealing with some of the municipal side, either expenditures or fee, non-tax increases, revenue increases. And also, I think we need a session on the capital as well.
Aren't we due in early December for a projection normally? Wouldn't that be about the target? I guess I'm asking, is that still reasonable, or do we want to try to reconsider?
Yeah, no, I think we're there, we'll be there in terms of the revenues, for sure.
I want to just express a little skepticism about permanently redoing the town-school partnership basic principles. And to me, it's, you know, the schools are in a time of tremendous need. It's appropriate for us to be looking at, here's what we would do under the town-school partnership, but we're going to make adjustments. I am, I'm somewhat, I think we should approach cautiously. I think the town-school partnership has been a nice way to give some budgeting certainty to both the town and the school side of the budget and has served us well for many, many years. And I think we have to be cautious about permanently adjusting those policies.
So can I, can I just clarify, my understanding, the enrollment component is part of the town-school partnership. By putting the enrollment component in, you're not modifying anything. It is part of the current agreement, okay? It's there. What I'm suggesting here, all I'm suggesting, which started this great conversation, right, is that because of the possibility of overrides and the discussion of various scenarios, it's been, that component of that partnership has been set to the side for the time being.
Meaning it could still come back.
Putting it back in is not a permanent change.
Meaning it could still come back.
Right, okay.
Pass an override and still have.
But one of the things I do think we should be considering is whether some, whether we should look at, whether some of their extraordinary expenses of renting space for some of the preschool activities would be appropriate to go into the CIP.
I think that's on the table as well.
Slavomir Franco.
So we had an election six days ago now, and when this model was created, the state funding assumptions were possibly different than what there are today based on the rhetoric of the campaign. So I guess this is a question for either Mr. Rau or Mr. Cronin, or whoever else wants to jump into the fire on this. I'm wondering if further revenue assumptions, revenue assumption changes need to be made in line with who was elected. The governor-elect has made a promise, I think during the campaign, to increase local aid going forward during his administration. I think it was a promise to increase local aid in line with increase in revenues that the state receives. So I'm just, that's all by way of saying, I'm wondering if we need to change the assumptions that were made in the model about either Chapter 70 money that we'll receive or unrestricted government aid, or we?
And don't I recall that there's a review of Chapter 70 underway as we speak?
That's basically what we did. When the superintendent mentioned that, we went back and looked at a number of the assumptions. One of the more significant ones was we increased Chapter 78 over a two-year period to get to that 17.5% threshold. So one of the old numbers, I think, I had Chapter 70 grown by maybe 2.5% a year. In fiscal '16, it's an $850,000 increase, so that's a pretty significant delta right there. And then in the second year, it's about $400,000, so getting, it's about $1.2 million over that two years to get to that 17% threshold. These are approximate numbers, talking with somebody who knows Chapter 70, and, you know, it's really not that simple. So those have been updated. And in terms of the unrestricted aid, I'm pretty sure I've got level funding in there for '16, and then some modest growth in '17 and '18.
We've had some correspondence about my skepticism about the health of the state budget in the current fiscal year and presumably in the next fiscal year. So I would just ask that we continue to monitor that situation and adjust this model accordingly.
Ms. Wolf, Dick, or any of the other school committee members?
Can I just say to that, I'm sorry, can I just say to that point? I mean, we did, we received notification today of the potential for 9C cuts, right, today, in the current year, from our legislative people at the Superintendent's Association. We're told that those conversations right now are within state departments about cuts in those departments, but we did just hear that, to your point, we did just hear that.
9C?
That's the mid-year cuts.
9C cuts, and Governor Patrick is considering those cuts now.
Thank you. I guess we'll end on that sobering note.
Right.
Sorry about that.
Well, thank you, I want to say thank you for putting this together, and I know it's, we keep asking you to do more work, but it is worthwhile, and I certainly appreciate what you've given us here.
Thank you very much. Can I just say, to finish this, I wanted, so I'm an educator, right? I mean, I'm a teacher. And I just want to go back to this point just one last time to end. We have asked people to do an awful lot over the last few years in order to focus primarily on ensuring that we could put teachers in classrooms with kids. And we've made an awful lot of sacrifices in other areas. And I just want to emphasize one more time how, you know, how close we are to the end of being able to do that. You looked at that short-term space options and needs, you see how close we are to really starting to run into some options that no one wants, right? And how close some of those pieces are, and the operating budget is in the same place. If I have one more conversation with principals about the need for the kinds of supports that we've laid out here in terms of literacy, or math, or guidance, or nursing, or social work, or all of those areas, and that's because they've played ball with us over the last number of years, and they've bought into the assumption that the best expenditure of our limited dollars was in the classrooms with kids. And as it says here, we're out of time. So I really appreciate these conversations, and please feel free to invite me back again if you want to talk. if you want to talk some more. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have you.[1797.78]